Go ahead and call the Monday, June 21st meeting of the Pasco-Tank County Utilities Committee meeting to order. We do have one change to the agenda, and that's to add a closed session. That'll become the new number eight on the agenda. Any other changes or additions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. So we'll go ahead and move forward with that to the minutes, approval of the minutes from April 19th.
I'm going to have to approve.
Second, I don't know if any other changes. All those in favor say aye. All right. Go to the next item, number three, open for public comments. Do you have anyone who signed up to speak? All right. Moving right along, going to the water rate study presentation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We've got Raptelis up to present first.
Go ahead.
Something about courtroom steak.
Yeah, you got it. Okay. All right. We're ready for your start. Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Melissa Ann, and I'm here today with Will Carr. And we are with Raptelis. And we're super excited this afternoon up to you guys and interview for the water rate study for the county. Based on our understanding of today's interview, what you guys wanted us to cover is who we are. So that is, you know, who is Raptelis and what sets us apart? Our understanding of the project objectives for the rate study? And then our project approach for kind of tackling those objectives and making sure we have the completion of a successful rate study? And then what we're going to do is we're going to kind of wrap up with questions and answers for you guys. So who is Raptelis? Raptelis is one of the largest and most experienced utility financial and management consulting firms in the country. We were started in Charlotte, North Carolina in 1993. And that's still our headquarters today, and both Will and I sit in the Charlotte office. We've run since 1993 to have over 120 rate consultants. We've served over 1,200 public agencies and utilities, which really represents more than 25% of the U.S. population and 38 of 50 largest cities of the United States. So in terms of our industry knowledge, we've made significant contributions to basically the majority of the industry manuals and books out there. We really kind of, you know, threw our input into some of these industry manuals. We really feel like we've kind of helped to shape the industry. And you'll see on the screen, we've got several of these manuals that we've kind of contributed to, and I'll just kind of point to a couple, especially as it relates to the rate study. The first one that you see, you know, the M1 manual, that's AWWA. We've made significant contributions to that. And the WEF manual, which is the wastewater version of M1 manual, significant contributions to that as well. Raptelis actually wrote a book, Water and Wastewater Financing Pricing, that you'll see, the second one from the right-hand side on the top row. All of our consultants wrote different chapters in that book, and that's also used as, you know, really an industry manual, kind of guiding water and wastewater financing and rates. Down at the bottom, we also work in conjunction with American Waterworks Association to do the biennial rate survey that you guys see that comes out every other year. And Raptelis has really done that over the last 20 years. So we joined forces with AWWA probably about 10 years ago, just to make it a little bit more meatier survey. And then on the right-hand side, we also work with ANWR to do an inside surveying database, which is basically a survey that captures a lot of the operating and financial characteristics of a lot of utilities across the country. So we have our fingers in a lot of different manuals and have access to a lot of different resources and tools across the industry. In terms of our experience, as you can see from the map, on the left-hand side, lots of national experience, and I think I alluded to that on that first slide. But on the right-hand side, if you look at Carolinas, like I said, Will and I are both in the Charlotte, North Carolina offices, our headquarters. This is where we started, and our hope has really been in the southeast. I've been with Raptelis for 22 years, so since 1999, and Will has been with Raptelis for the last nine years. And we've focused a lot, especially in, you know, Georgia, Tennessee, but really very heavily focused in the Carolinas. This is our backyard. We're in North Carolina. This is really where I've done the majority of my water and wastewater financial consulting work is in the Carolinas. And you'll see, we've got a lot of blue dots there. But I've got a lot of times across North Carolina that I've provided consulting services for for the last 15 to 20 years. City of Raleigh, city of Asheville, Greenwell Utilities Commission, some of the smaller ones, city of Oxford, Romanoff Rapids, North Carolina. And we've also been doing some work along the coast there. We're doing work currently for Curritah County and both Dare County, while us holding beach. So really kind of covering the Carolinas and would love to kind of share some of our experience with you guys. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Will to talk about the project objectives and the project approach.
Sure. Thanks, Melissa. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with everyone today. My name's Will Carr, and like Melissa said, I'm going to step through our objectives and then our project approaches we've drawn it up. You know, when we do a rate study or a financial planning study, you know, we typically start with some overarching goals. These are some things that we've got to do to make sure that this study is a success. And one of the big overarching ones is promoting, you know, that long-term system sustainability mindset, especially in terms of financial health. I mean, your water sewer utilities got to last forever, and we want to help, you know, we want to help you reach that goal. You know, the other big one is we always want to craft a financial plan, you know, often, or maybe not often, but if we do a study and, you know, the rate structural adjustments aren't made, that's not a huge deal if you're generating enough money to cover your, you know, your expenses. But if you're not, you're going to run into some trouble down the road. So, you know, we always like to make sure that we've got our arms around the financial plan and that we're recovering enough money to run the system, because otherwise it doesn't matter what rate structure we have in place. If we don't have enough money to pay for our costs, we can't keep this day going. You know, within this study, we want to take a look at the existing rate structure and recommend adjustments to rates and fees as appropriate. We'll cover that in a little more detail here in a couple of slides. But that's certainly a primary focus of this study for sure. You know, we want to document the results of the study to the county board of commissioners as identified in the RFP. And then, you know, at the end of this study, we'll, you know, throughout the study, I guess I should say, we'll be building a rate and financial planning model to run our analytics. And that will become property of the county at the end of this study. So that will be, you know, a great tool for financial planning and rate setting to use into the future. So what we've done here is we've outlined the project approach that we put into our proposal here, and we just wanted to hit a couple of the high notes with you all since we don't have a ton of time. So I'm going to step, you know, kind of quickly through these, but I'm going to focus on task three and task four a little bit, where we talk about developing a financial plan, as well as, you know, rate design and rate calculation information. So, you know, we'll start the study by, you know, initiating the project, and we want to have a kickoff workshop where we can collect, you know, feedback and input on the goals and financial objectives of the utility and rate-setting stakeholders. From there, the information to get there, that will help inform our financial plan, as well as the rate structural modifications we consider in task four. You know, task five includes covering, you know, ancillary fees and miscellaneous fees, which is another piece of this study. Task six, we set aside some time for, you know, developing the rate model, even though we build, you know, a lot of it as we kind of work through task three, four, and five. And then finally, the study, you know, would conclude with a report and presentation of the results of this study. So like I said, I wanted to focus a little bit on task three and task four, since those are just so critical to a successful project. So when we're building a financial plan, we're looking at both the, you know, the expense side of things, as well as the revenue side of things. So I'll start first on the expense side, and what the goal, you know, as we're creating this financial plan is identifying our future needs, and what we call those our revenue requirements, which is really just a fancy word for cost, but it's how much revenue we want to cover through user rates and charges over our financial plan. So the costs that go into that, that's going to be our own-end budget, our operating expenses. And then we're going to, you know, include our capital costs, which is going to include existing debt on loans that are currently outstanding, as well as potential future debt that might be related to the capital improvement plan, or future debt that we may issue to help pay for that capital plan. We're also going to have some cash finance capital in there. And then the two other, you know, big pieces of the puzzle that we want to make sure we're hitting are our key financial policies. We're always keeping an eye on reserve targets. You know, we want to make sure we've got enough money in rainy day con, should we need it, as well as debt service coverage. We've got to make sure we're generating enough revenue to meet our obligations on our loans. So what we'll do is we'll create a forecast of revenue requirements, and we'll project those costs into the future. And this is, you know, this serves as the baseline for the financial plan. We've got to generate, you know, we're projecting to need this much money over the next five years. You know, how are we going to get there? So then we'll jump to the revenue side of things, and what we'll do there is we'll take a look at system billing data, and we'll come up, we'll prepare a forecast of customer billing data. So that will consider, you know, growth in customers or customer accounts, you know, inclining or declining usage per account. You know, we'll factor all that into our forecast and command. That information gets paired with our rates and charges to create our forecast of revenue at existing rates. So what we've got, you know, at that point, we've got our forecast of revenue requirements, our forecast of costs, and our forecast of revenue at existing rates. And then we can compare those two to see, you know, are we generating enough money at our existing rates to cover our projected expenses? And then all of that, you know, sort of blends together to create our financial plan, and that's where we get an understanding of what level of rate increases may need in the future. You know, how are we going to kind of cover the costs that we're projecting over the next five years? One thing we noted in the RFP is that it does sound like the county has some capital investment needs. We noted that there was a CIP that the rate study really needed to be in lockstep with, and this is a great place to weave that in, and we'll take the CIP and make sure that we've identified funding sources and figure out how we're going to pay for that, you know, over the planning period. So I'm getting a little ahead of myself, because, you know, we've got a separate task for the rate model, but I didn't want to, you know, it just fits so well here after talking about the financial plan. I didn't want to talk just quickly about, you know, our dashboarding capabilities. You know, one thing that we love to include in our financial models is the dashboard that lets you quickly analyze scenarios or key outputs of the financial plan. And one chart that I really love is this one up here in the top left, which shows, you know, financial performance over kind of the forecast period. And what we're showing here is the bars are our revenue requirements, so those are our costs. And then the dashed line here is our forecast of revenues at existing rates. And as you can see, our revenues at existing rates are not covering our costs, so some rate increases would be needed. And that's the solid line there includes some rate increases, and so you can see that with this program of increases for, you know, this example utility here, you know, some increases are needed to be able to meet that projection of costs. From there, there's a whole score of other charts, you know, that we'll often include on dashboards. Debt service coverage, which are shown up in the top right, and operating reserve balances. You know, cash in the bank is shown in the bottom left. And again, these are interchangeable if there are certain priorities that we want to look at, or, you know, if we just want more charts, that's something that we do as well. But the model is completely customized, built from scratch for every client. So having a dashboard that, you know, aligns with your financial goals and your objectives for a large utility is definitely a great output of this study. So once we nail down the financial plan, then we get into the cost allocation and rate design and rate calculation, which is task four in our proposal. And, you know, one thing, so we're looking at the rate, we found, you know, a printout of your rate structure on your website, and I didn't know that it was effective, you know, these rates were effective 2013. I don't know if these are the current rates, or if you've got something more recent in place. But if they were last, you know, put into place in 2013, you know, there's definitely a chance that they're due up for some reconsideration. You know, we noted that you've got a minimum allowance for the first thousand gallons of $15, and then, you know, five-tier inclining block structure on water. On the sewer side, you know, a little simpler structure there in terms of volume, which is a single uniform rate. But, you know, while we're working through cost allocation and rate design, we want to understand whether or not your current structure is meeting, you know, the goals and objectives that we identify in kickoff meeting and throughout the study. If it is, and if it's reaching those goals and you're good with it, maybe there's just some small modifications that we can make to enhance, you know, the equity within this structure. And if it's not, if you want a full overhaul, if you need something, if you think there's a, you know, if we think that there's a structure out there that better meets your goals, you know, we can certainly help you get to that. However, you know, we always like to point out considerations when we're looking at alternative rate structures. And one of those, we want to make sure that it's meeting our pricing objectives. If we're trying to incentivize conservation, or if we need more revenue stability, if we want a higher fixed charge, you know, those are considerations that have to be weighed and often can conflict with one another. So that's an important consideration. You know, revenue generation risk. I just mentioned fixed revenue, but, you know, you've got a minimum charge in here, and so maybe in terms of fixed revenue, you're comfortable with where you are, or, you know, maybe there's some changes you'd like to see there. You know, another really important component is making sure that we don't come up with a rate structure that the system can't handle, or that data is not readily available to use. So we want to make sure that we find a structure that meets our goals, but not overly complex and overly burdensome on staff or the, you know, billing infrastructure, et cetera. Implementation and update sort of goes with the same thing. I mean, you want to be able to manage the structure and update it easily, and so we want to consider that. And then, of course, customer impacts is a huge one. I mean, we want to make sure that our structure is not resulting in really wild customer impacts. We want to make sure that we understand if we're making structural changes, who may be impacted, and why, so that we can explain that if there are questions. So that, you know, that rounds out the financial plan and the rate calculation and rate design components. You know, once kind of tackling those, that's really the meat of the study. You know, from there, ancillary and miscellaneous fees are, you know, something that we'll look at, and we'll look at your profile or your revenue profile of existing fees and charges, and we'll see what else, see what's in there, and whether there's modifications that need to be made, or other fees that may need to be considered. You know, I know I've mentioned our rate model a couple of times, and just to hit on it one more time, you know, as we work through task three and four, we'll really build the majority of the model kind of as we go. Within task six, we've got some time in there for building a dashboard and making sure, you know, that staff is comfortable with use of that rate model. And then task seven, you know, reports and presentations, we just want, and we want to make sure that you've got the deliverables that you need and expect from the study, and we'll work with you on that. I think we've got a report in our proposal as well, and the presentation to county council, and we'll, you know, work with staff to get all that information pulled together. So that, I think Melissa's going to take us to the finish line, and then I think we'll have a few minutes for some Q and A.
Yep. So several of the, you know, we talked about our national and our original experience. We talked about, you know, our industry knowledge with the books and the manuals that we contributed to, the depth of resources. Like I said, we've got over 120 consultants. Our headquarters is in Charlotte. But a couple of things I just wanted to kind of just, you know, reiterate and kind of mention, you know, to you guys. How many of you see there? We are a registered municipal advisor, and so what that means is we're actually registered with the Securities Exchange Commission and also the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board. And that was requirement from the Dog Frank Act. And what that means is, I know that you guys, Will had mentioned capital improvement plan. If you go to issue debt, or there's debt involved, we are qualified and we are registered to help you guys with the size and timing of that debt. What that also means is that we are responsible and required, as a part of being registered, to provide you guys with sound municipal advice and sound financial, you know, advice. And so I think that is definitely something that you will not see that some of our competitors have, so I wanted to point that out. And the other thing on this slide that I just really wanted to mention, you know, we'll talk a little bit about the model. A lot, you will see, you know, there's going to be some consulting firms that will have, you know, a standard model that they will try to force fit onto your budget and your financial practice and your metrics and those kind of things. You know, like he said, we actually build them all from scratch. We build it around your operating budget, your financial policies, the metric that you guys like to monitor. So we're really building it for you all as we're going along. And I think what that helps is, in the end, when we walk away and we leave you with that model, we're leaving you with a product that you're going to use and that you're going to feel comfortable with. And I think that's huge, and I think that's important to mention. And like I said, you know, we've talked a lot about our experience. I just want to reiterate, you know, we're in Charlotte, you're in our backyard. We would absolutely love to, you know, share our experience with you and our knowledge and, you know, work with you guys to accomplish, you know, what it is to accomplish for this rate study. It's all in there, and if you guys have any questions, we would, you know, love to answer them.
Go ahead. Thank you for your presentation. We have a couple of questions. One is, and this is something that's come up in the past, is there's, at some point in time, you had a relationship with Elizabeth City in Pasco-Tank County. Would you explain that and what that was about?
Yeah.
A couple of new members on the board, and they need to understand what happened.
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, that we haven't worked with the Elizabeth City, I guess it's probably been a couple of years now. And there was a gentleman there that had a relationship with actually the guy that is the director of our stormwater practice. And so since they had a relationship, he had provided some, you know, financial consulting, you know, to that's former director of the Elizabeth City. That person is no longer with Elizabeth City, and so there is no relationship with Raptelis and Elizabeth City. And in addition, I guess I would just point out, that consulting was provided from our stormwater practice. It actually was not even really provided through the water and sewer practice. So we're actually a little bit different team of individuals that you'd be working with versus who Elizabeth City works with.
If I'm not mistaken, it was a rate study which was provided over all on water, not on stormwater?
It wasn't water rate study, but it was done by our stormwater practice. I know, yeah, a different group of consultants.
So the follow-up to my question is, to be fair and impartial, explaining to these two board members, and we've had this issue once before with Raptelis on the city side of it, against the county, is what makes you cure that issue with your presentation?
Can you repeat that question?
The question is, the question is, is that at some point in time, when there was a rate study, your individuals at Raptelis were working for the city and the county trying to resolve a matter on rate studies, how are you going to be able to set your side aside, set aside, and explain to these two members to the board that this is a fresh sheet of paper, and we're moving forward from that time?
Um, well, you know, I think, I'm thinking that you guys are talking about, I think it's a wholesale issue that maybe was between the city and the county?
That's exactly right, yes.
And I think, you know, really, I looked back, because I know that was something that was mentioned, and I wanted to make sure that I understood really kind of what was going on there. And my understanding of that issue, it was about an hour and a half of time built, and it was just really kind of a, just an overarching kind of, hey, this is the way the industry typically does. I don't know that there was ever really any detailed work done, you know, on that issue. It was more, this is the way it's typically handled. So I did not, I don't really perceive, you know, any, or any, anything that would, you know, create a problem kind of moving forward.
My question again is, how are you going to set aside that issue which happened between the county five years ago, which was all great?
Is the question, is your question really?
It's trying to make sure that we get a fair and impartial rate study.
Are there any conflicts of interest? Is that?
That's in the direction, yes, Sean. Making sure we do not have an unbiased opinion, not one which was used several years ago from staff. Thank you.
Definitely, you know, there's no conflict of interest. You know, like I said, I think that was just a wholesale study, and we're working on a water rate study. And, you know, they're, in my mind, they're almost kind of two different things. I mean, I don't think there's going to be a lot of overlap between the two.
Well, can I follow up on that? We have two, we have two wholesale customers right now, which we work with. One is the city, and one is the county of McQuillan's County, which is part of this rate study. So how is that not going to be an overlap of what you've already done?
Understanding, I mean, was that this is more of a retail rate study as opposed to a wholesale rate study?
Okay. All right, thank you.
We would take into consideration the revenues, you know, the wholesale revenues from that revenue stream, but since those are contract rates, we really would not be changing those wholesale rates.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, but, Sean, our engineer who, Leo Green Associates, this is a comprehensive rate study, that's regular retail, wholesale, and any production as we're doing for future growth. And so we have to be in position to do this. That's why my question is to the point of, if there's something you've done this before, and something where there was a conflict between the city and the county, how is this going to have an impact on that study, or our current rate as we move forward?
To calculate a wholesale rate for you guys, I do not think it would have an impact. I'm not even, you know... I'm not even, you know, we, like I said, it would be fair and impartial just because we did not do the work out of our office for Elizabeth City. So we would be working for you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
I'm good on that.
I had some questions, but I think God took care of them.
Okay, sorry about that.
All right, in that case, my question just kind of go more towards the proposals, mainly towards staff, I guess, do we have any other objectives that were not listed in the presentation that need to be addressed other than?
I think presentation covered everything.
Yes. We've got the deliverables listing, that was part of our request, right? And then kind of following up, were some of the charts and forecasts, it did mention in the presentation that, you know, they don't want to try to get data that they don't have access to. So do we have the ability to get to the granularity for everything that you've seen so far?
That would be on your, I think that was on page four of your slide presentation or five, I think that's what Sean's asking. The one where you have that graph and you're showing your different, if you could pop back up to that graph, there's a tour, it might be further down in there. There you go. Sean, when you're asking about the plan.
Yeah, so on that dashboard there, you list a few of the types, but you guys haven't seen anything that we can't get to or provide with our current resources, is that?
That's correct, we can provide that information.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. Okay, move on to that.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
And I'll just say, this dashboard that Will is showing on your, this would be one of those things that is part of the model we would design for you all. So whatever type of metrics that you want to measure, we can put that on the dashboard and have those monitored. So it's very customized to your needs, you know, your debt service coverage requirement and, you know, operating reserve balances that you're talking about.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question more, so David, are they, like, the next train we're adding to the system and then the weeks will upgrade, is that going to be in this part of this financial distribution model as they're talking about?
Well, that is in our CIP, so that would, the debt, the financial side is only, is in the CIP, so that would be the long-term.
Well, is that part of their financial evaluation of the system and how we get a regular recovery?
Yes, that's all part of it. Everything is in the CIP.
And that was a pretty significant number, according to the Green and Associates?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
She showed the 2013 rates, that's not current.
See, 2013 was last time the residential water rates were changed, but we have had some of the fees in the last two or three years, I think, or since it's been on board. But the residential rate's been the same since 2013.
And it was only, Sherry might be more than me, the residential rate wasn't changed for a long time, from the eighties to sometime probably mid-two thousands, I mean, it went a long time without being changed, huh?
It hasn't changed until we put in an oral plan.
That's correct. Mr. Gregory changed it just after we came up online and to, I think with, the volume gets.
It used to be 2,000 gallons, fifteen dollars or something. And reduced to 1,000, about fifteen.
All right, Mr. Chairman, looks like we've got McGill, everyone is up now.
Is Dale, is somebody Dale still up there seeing what we're doing?
Yes.
Can you, can you hear me? Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, this is Danny Bridges. Let's see, let me make sure, Gary and Dale, are both of you, Dale, you're muted, are both of y'all on?
Yes.
And Danny, we can't see you.
Okay. Right now?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Are you, might need a little patience to make sure I can get the presentation piece of the way that we need to, but.
You should be on the screen.
Yeah, let me, let me get to that one. Share screen, here we go.
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Can you see my screen? Okay. All right, great. I'm going to try to now put this in presentation mode. If it doesn't, if it still doesn't come through the way that we would like for it to, I will come back to this screen. Actually, right before we get into that, let me, first off, start out by saying, thank you for the opportunity to interview. Obviously, we're with McGill Associates and we do certainly appreciate the opportunity. We would prefer it to be in person, but we understand why it has to be the way it is today, so we appreciate your time. I'm going to go ahead and see if I can start this presentation and we'll get the ball rolling. We're trying to be very cognizant of your, your time. Sure. All right, I'm going to go ahead and get started in what we'd like to do. We obviously, with our firm, I'm going to give you a quick overview of who you're going to hear from today. And obviously, with McGill Associates, you have access to any and all of our staff if we are privileged enough and have the opportunity to work with the county on the study. But with the timeframe and timelines we had today, what we wanted to do was bring folks that would be heavily involved in the process. And you can see on the screen, again, you see in our statement of qualifications, so we're certainly not going to go through and rehash that. But the folks you're going to hear from today, we think, give an excellent reason for how we would be a good partner with the county. You're going to hear from Dale Shepers, who's our rate study analyst, and Dale's got over 30 years of experience in local government. And 26 plus of those years, he was involved in utilities and public works at the management level and we certainly think that's very important to a rate study. The other part of our staff is with us today that you'll hear from is Mr. Kerry Jackson. Gary's got 35 years in management, local government management and city management and the last 12 of his years in management was as the city of Asheville city manager. And so those are two gentlemen you're going to be hearing from and then myself, I've been with the company, I'm a principal and vice president and I have been with McGill Associates for 33 years in various capacities. So what we wanted to do today was have the folks in front of you that we think can tell you the most about why we think we'd be a good partner with the county. We do think that our staff brings a lot of the elements are very important, we've done a lot of these before and we've found this to be a group that seems to work together and provides an excellent resource to the local governments we've had an opportunity to work with. We bring that local government management experience. Just as importantly, we bring public utilities to an operational experience. We think that's critically important when you're talking about a water rate study. And then, of course, we also bring the engineering that's relative to utilities experience and we think our team brings all of those together, work in conjunction with our local government staffs that we've worked with before and we think that's, makes for a very good opportunity to bring the resources to the table. I want to go ahead and, hopefully you can see the fixed app, I'm going to now turn it over to Dale Shepers, the gentleman I was telling you about that does, he's our rate study analyst, so I'll let Dale take it over at this point.
Hey, good morning, good afternoon. Pleasure to be here. Again, I appreciate the opportunity and I'm going to just run through a bit of approach and methodology on rate studies and how we approach that and how we do our business. What you see here on the screen is the rate study model is individually for each utility, for each customer, for each client, and it is specific to each one. So not a lot of cookie cutter here, but what we're looking at is, is what to get out of all those inputs that we put into this model and the calculations that are going to be meaningful in the process. So our approach is that we have, we have our folks as an extension of your staff, that's how we view ourselves. We need to learn all that we need to, what we need to learn about your utility, about the inputs, about the assumptions that you have, about the policies, about the direction, about the goals and so forth. So we view ourselves that way, it's an interactive process. It's not a, give us some numbers, we put it in the black box, turn it in the bank, you get something like this. You'll know where these numbers come from, you know how the calculations are made, you'll know the relationships are between the various elements and how they interact and what they mean. So this is just a quick snapshot of that collective step here. So if you don't explain, just as an example, the revenue expenses kind of on top, then as we do and complete the revenue requirements analysis, that will then give us those percent increases that would need to be applied to sustain the utility over the planning period, whether it's five or 10 years. Then in addition to that, you know, what are the outcomes? What happens as those rate increases take effect? And you can see in the next box under outcomes and effects, in that is included the effect on a typical residential bill. So what happens to that customer that has, you know, kind of the average amount of usage? This one is a bi-monthly bill and you can see across the table how that changes over time and what that difference is in each successive fiscal year. And we're also going to track the financial indicators, one of which here would be in particular like a fund balance. So what happens in your fund balance over that time? And then at the end of the day, what do we buy? What does it give us? You know, what is important to the utility, which is your capital reinvestment? You can see here in the first five years of a 10-year iteration in the planning process, there's $18 million worth of capital improvements are being planned for this town as they're evaluating and knowing what the rates will be in order to accomplish that. You'll also notice that the rate increases are kind of big, that has to do with a substantial increase in water purchase price for this particular client. Okay, next slide. So then, we, I represent that also in graphic form. So columns are your expenses and those major, major types of expenses over in the legend, we see the cash financed, capital improvements, capital outlay type investment, the debt services you have existing and proposed over that time period. And then, you know, the bigger portion of the column is obviously the operating expenses. What does it take to turn the lights on every day? The lines are our rates, revenue from rates, dash line is existing, if you don't raise your rates, look what happens, and the rates that are proposed represent the solid line. Line over columns means we're going to look good and we can drill down into the specifics in those tables, so you can just see how those relationships are. So next slide, kind of back to the overall, so you can see all those elements together, upper portion, revenue expenses, middle with the highlight, what does that do to increases in terms of percentage? How does that affect customers? How are we tracking financially what we're accomplishing? And then the graphic representation. These, we hand these out at a public meeting, 11 by 17 format, fold it a couple of times, fits into your briefcase nicely. It's easy to fold this thing out and explain pretty much everything that you need to explain as folks are asking questions. You know, what does that do to the average bill? What does that do to, you know, the revenues that are projected and so forth? So then, following along, after we do the revenue requirements analysis, get those rate adjustments quantified and so forth, we also keep track of a number of what I call financial health checkup benchmarks. So there are a number of these that are available that are industry standard measurements, local government commission has their suite as well. For this particular client to pick out these five, say, these are the, these are the things we want to watch and keep close eye on. So as we communicate that to decision makers, what's going on? What's the trend look like? Here we have five years of history and two years of forecast. So based on the history and then the financial models forecast moving into the future, what are we, what's our utility looking like? And here we have a couple of them, one of them that still needs a little work, operating ratio, looks like it was had a little ups and downs over a few years. But again, as we put together that revenue requirements analysis and understand and determine what needs to be adjusted so we can adjust revenues to meet those requirements, O and M and capital costs and reserves and debt service coverage and so forth, then heading uphill is moving in the right direction. So these, these benchmarks are specific to the needs of our individual clients. This is an example of a merger regionalization study that we did. One of the, one of the main components, one of the main concerns was the cost of operation for the water plant. So you'll see that we have a comparison of that water production cost in terms of dollars per million gallons produced to give some comparables for folks to make some decisions to give direction on, you know, what other things we can look at in terms of perhaps combining resources or management capabilities and those things to better run their utilities. So again, this would look different for a rate study, you'd be looking at, you know, some comparable communities. But again, our purpose and our goal here is to identify the benchmark that makes the most sense for your utility and, you know, calculate that and compare to others that would make sense, that have some commonality, that look and act like your utility does. And again, this is an interactive and iterative process that I'm just not going to pull a few guys out of the hat and see how we look. We're going to look with enough depth and enough specific comparison to know that it's meaningful when we look at other utilities in terms of how that compares. So I'm going to turn this back over to Danny at this point. You're muted there.
Yeah, I actually want to turn it over, go ahead Gary, if you don't mind.
Will do, will do. Gentlemen, thank you for this opportunity. I want to say that this is a leading activity, this is the right thing to do, to plan your capital improvements and keep up with your rates and make sure your system's serving the community and we're glad for you to be a part of it. One thing I would add to what Dale has already covered is that, that what you'll receive in addition to those summary documents and graphs is a report that's approximately 20 to 25 pages. We won't overburden you with a lot of tables and charts, but we'll definitely develop those scenarios and go through the benchmark that you want us to have put in there. I'll add to what Danny said and echo that we have extensive hands-on experience and we want to work with you, we want to make sure that you get the info. we, we want to work with you, we want to make sure that you get the information you need to make, the sound decisions that will lead your community. That's why I came to work for McGill. This is an outfit that wants to deliver for local governments, and we'll do our very best, and you will be proud of the work. We have an extensive list of satisfied customers for rate studies, and we can actually share those with you when we get into the questions and answers, if that's of interest to you. But, it's a broad list of clients and they're satisfied, and we're happy to share that with you as well. The main point I want to make with the time that's remaining for me is that we do have hands-on nuts and bolts experience. Dale started as a sewer plant operator. I started as a budget analyst, doing rate studies for the city of Dallas, and parlayed that into, fortunately, a career in city management and oversaw many systems, water systems. And I was very conscious of what our rate would be and keep up with our capital improvement programs, but I also wanted to do the benchmark, which I understand you want to do, to make sure we're competitive economically with our surrounding communities. So, with that, I'll turn it back to Danny to wrap up what we have to share with you at this time.
Thank you, Gary and Dale both. And the, we want to be very mindful of our time here, and so, what we wanted to do, the last, last slide here that we feel like, that we want to share with you is, one, it's always important, an important aspect of any study, of any, any project you undertake, is timeline, schedule. And this timeline is the same timeline that you saw in our statement qualifications. Obviously, we took the liberty of changing the months with that to accommodate kind of point time where we are now. But, you know, if we're fortunate enough to have the opportunity to work with the county, this is, this is the way we would see the timeline laying out. Obviously, it'd be a lot more detailed than this, but, you know, working through, getting a contract squared away, but then, you know, having a month of July to have work sessions with staff and then really just sharing information back and forth. We would provide staff with preliminary findings that we have and then, you know, that would work through August to September. And then, you know, final report, recommendations, again, going back and forth, communicating that with, with staff and talking through that. And then, at the end of that, once, once that study was completed, then there would be a final recommendations to be made to the board, you know, probably in the context of a work session, but obviously, that would be, you know, y'all's, it's y'all's pleasure how you'd like to have that. I think we've about exhausted our time, but let me, let me say, the primary takeaway in this is that McGill Associates very much wants to partner with Passapoke County, and we would love the opportunity to work with staff and with the board and to help you go through this process, and we think that we certainly have the resources and staff that can help do that. You've heard a little bit from our folks about what we bring to the table. And so, having said that, I feel like we've tried to cover an awful lot of ground in a short period of time, but if that's it, then we'll, we'll move to the questions and answers session and try to stay on schedule.
Thank you. Any questions for McGill and Associates? What parts of North Carolina have y'all covered in the past?
The question was, what parts of North Carolina have you done work in? Now, let me, let me show you this, and I'm trying to go between mute and unmute. Here's, here's the partial list. Can y'all, can y'all see that on your screen? That's a partial list of the ones that we've worked with, and that gives you some, some breadth. As you can see, we, we have covered the state. You know, obviously, there's, you've got coastal towns and communities, counties there. You've got, obviously, Piedmont is represented there as well, of course, is, is western North Carolina as well. So, that's, that's a, that's a list of some of the folks that we've worked with.
I've got several. Looks to me like someone that has houses in the western part of state and in the southeastern part of state. Hook you into your workload here. I did see you had an office in Williamsburg. Williamsburg, where would your primary contact come from? Raleigh or what area?
Well, your, your primary, the liaison would be myself, and I'm, I'm one of the, I'm, I'm, where you see, Williamsburg, Virginia.
Right.
I am that, I am that person, about an hour and a half away. I think, if you saw in the statement qualifications, we've just recently completed, completed the raw water transmission line project for Elizabeth City, and I was heavily involved in that, in that project as well. You have Gary coming out of our, out of our Raleigh office. We've got some of our other engineering folks who'd be coming out of Pinehurst, and Dale is, is, is in our Hickory office. But, I would be, I would be the primary point of contact, the primary liaison, if you will.
So, I saw something about Williamson. Is that Williamson, North Carolina, where you were doing a comparative rate study? Can you go back to, I think it was one of the last slides that you put up there? People were asking for you. It was at the end, I think, towards the bottom.
Yeah.
Yep. Once you get there.
Hang on.
Like, there you go.
Well, there we go.
So, is that what we're, we're looking at when you're starting to develop your, your plan, looking at how rate studies, the cost of production of water, just making sure, you know, I mean, we can't say that we're, I mean, the towns you have there are not in eastern North Carolina, and we produce water at a different rate probably with different capacities. But, is that kind of the model we want to start seeing? How you're going to generate comparable systems and our values? Or are you going to take raw data from David and put it on a, on a matrix and say, okay, we have a subdivision that's going to have 150 houses in it, and we're going to project this, what's our rate, rate of return on producing water?
Dale, can you address that particular question? And I'll also pull that, the other slide that we had.
We had another one in there somewhere. I was trying to find it.
Okay, let me, let me just make sure I've got the question right, that we're, I'm understanding the question to be that, is the cost of water production the primary building block of the model and what it's going to predict and how it's going to carry through over time? The answer to that is that, you know, water production is one element of those operational costs that go into the revenue requirements analysis. We cover the O and M, we cover capital outlay, you know, the cash that you're going to, that you're going to finance things with as time goes along, your existing debt service, your projected debt service over the planning period, any kind of reserves or contingency accounts, those sorts of things all have to be covered. Everything all boils down to, you also have to maintain the debt service coverage ratio as well. So, you're, you're demonstrating that you have sufficiency of revenue and sustainability of your utility. That's, that's how we put it together. That's the methodology, following, you know, AWWA industry standard approach, and, you know, we follow the textbook to, to make those calculations as they're, as the industry demands.
So, if we could follow up a little bit more on that, it's because right now, our engineering consultant, we're adding another skid to our, our O plant with an upgrade to our original existing plant and blending those together. I think that's, is that right, David? I would blend the two together.
Blend the two. Eventually, we'll blend the, our two plants together.
Two plants with the same lots of water, but we're also adding another 1,000 to 1,200 capacity to the, our system. And I'm not hearing where we're looking at that capital included in the discussion that you're talking about. Is that in the cost services analysis or revenue adjustments or methodology?
Okay, so, the audio's a little, a little fuzzy for me, so, I believe, well, my understanding is that, the question is that you've got a couple of, of decision points to make in your capital investment. If we, if we go this direction with combining some plants and so forth, what do we get versus going a different direction? So, my answer to that is that we can, we can develop the scenarios to fit those, you know, particular analysis that you need. If it's a, you know, what happens if we put it all together and, and, you know, combine into one plant, one water source, we can, we can make that determination. If we run them separately and continue to, we can do that as well. And, again, that would be an iterative process and those elements that, that go with that. Is there, you know, for example, are there labor savings with making, you know, combining some of those efforts? Or would there be additional staff if we go a different direction? And all those things will plug into the model as those inputs to then, you know, tell us what happens. I mean, what, what do you need for revenue and then what do you need for rate increases to, you know, generate that revenue to make this thing go?
I'll be able to clarify a little bit more, sorry for that, is that we have one RO plant, which we need to add one skid to it so that we can upgrade our old water plant within the next four years, I think. We've got a 10-year plan, is that right?
Correct.
It's a 10-year plan, however, we'll be starting with the RO plant first, get it up into one and get our new, new customers online, and then move into the, the second phase or third phase of our rehabilitation of an older plant.
But, I think what you're asking, right, is all the things that are currently in our 10-year plan are going to be considered and made a part of this, this price and rate curve.
Correct, sure. Chairman, I think they'll take the CIP and look through where we're projecting our funds and, and take it off.
But, we're not going to be taking on debt on some of this for four or five years from now.
Still going to be a factor, Danny.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely. I mean, that's, that's the purpose and, and the functionality of the model is to do exactly what you're talking about. Yes, that's absolutely what we do. And then, like I said before, we can, you know, if we look at that and say, oh my goodness, that doesn't make a lot of sense, then there may be some adjustments that you can make, phasing projects or changing scheduling a bit or coordinating a little bit differently in terms of when you build, when you build it and those sorts of things, that I think that's, that's the, the power of creating the model, is that once you get all these things put together, you can then do a few scenarios, a couple of what ifs, in terms of the direction that you're thinking about and does that make the most sense? Short-term, long-term? I mean, we can, we can put it together in, in any arrangement that makes the most sense and fits your needs. So, again, you're, you're driving the ship, and I'm just there to, you know, put the coal in the, in the boiler to make the steam to make it go.
Danny, I have one follow-up question. Oh, you said you just finished a water transmission line with the city of Elizabeth City? Is that what McGill just finished? Is that what you just said?
Yes, it was the raw water line. They, they had an existing 10-inch raw water line and we replaced it, left it in place, but replaced it with a 14-inch raw water line.
So, have y'all done any, any other type of work in rate studies comparisons such as we're talking about now?
I think you mean with the city.
Yes.
With the city.
Sorry, sorry.
Oh, no, no, sir. We haven't, no, we haven't done any studies relative as far as the city of Elizabeth City is concerned. We have not.
All right, thank you.
All right. I think that's, that's all the questions that we have, and we are, again, running out of time here, so we need to keep this moving. Thank you very much, again, for your presentation.
Thank, thank you very much as well, and if there's any follow-up or anything else that you need, Mr. Ham or anyone else, please feel free to reach out to me and we'll get you any information that you may need.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Going to move on to.
Thank you very much for your time.
Going to move on to number five.
Bye-bye.
The SCADA bid opening.
Yes, Chairman. The agenda was done last week. The, the bid opening was scheduled to be today. At the end of the week, we had a bidder come in and ask some questions, so we did it then, and that would be delayed now to July 1, make sure all of their sound information, so that can be put aside till, for the foreseeable future.
All right, so we're delaying that opening until July?
July 1 will be that bid.
How much time are they going to have, once they get the, the questions answered? I mean, are we providing that information to them?
Yes, yes.
They have a couple of weeks.
They didn't go out, they have the time. They'll have all the information, we'll be adding them up to it.
Okay. Is that the only update then for that item?
Yes, for that, I do have item six.
Okay.
Just go to the next one, so we can get through. The wellfield study, back in February, we were looking at doing the wellfield management plan for the RO, a 3D study for the RO in the Weasel plant. I met with groundwater management in Greenville, and they gave me a contract, and at the time in February, I had projected about $125,000 for those studies, which I approved. The original came in at $118,000, personally about $7,000 in the budget. Couple of weeks later, GMA called me by, O R O, who does I RO system, and who came down in April to discuss the upgrade to, to RO plant, the extra 1B gallon train. They talked, they, we were in a conference call and talking to GMA, they would, they recommended that we go ahead and do some extra testing on the Weasel well sites, and this is preliminary for the changing that over to the nano system, which is three or four years out. And with those changes, it did increase the, it did increase the Weasel wellfield study to $73,000, $260. The bottom line is, it's $10,000 over what I had recommended, $125,000. So, now it's $135,060 for those studies. But, this is a precursor to nano filtration systems, so we're really just spending the money earlier than projected. We're doing it in conjunction with the Weasel original study, and this will be part of the nano filtration study. It's just extra test of certain chemicals and runs that they want to deal with wells. So, I'm just, I guess, need a amendment to the $125,000 to $135,060 would be the amount.
Where are you going to, where are you going to pull the money from? You got it. So, staff's recommendation is to move forward with the updated proposal?
Yes.
All right, for staff's recommendation, do you have any other questions?
They say this, this is money we're going to spend anyway.
Yes, this is preliminary. It probably actually saved us because they're doing it while they're here anyway. They won't come back in in three years.
Should have led with that.
This is a plan to save money, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. All those other charts that we just got done looking at, you know, all their, all their rate increases went like that. It was just simple data. Mr. Griffin, do you have any questions?
No, it seems like we're moving along, trying to get things done and get us back in operating conditions. Seems like we didn't have any deferred maintenance, we just found a follow-up.
Plain catch-up.
Yes.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Move forward with staff's recommendation on the updated proposal?
Yes.
All right, second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, number seven, the Newland acquisition pump station update, we're going to move quickly.
Well, and Mr. Chairman, we, what we could do here, I know we need to go to closed session, I just have a small PowerPoint system update. If you want to defer to the next meeting, we can, so we can take care of this.
David, can I, can you just give a snapshot of where we're, with this 40.5 mile?
Oh, okay. I didn't, I didn't realize that was up.
Yeah, that just gives a quick snapshot, and then, because that, in picture 16 is where your pump station is going to go on that piece of property we just bought.
Right. This is, this is Newland, what we're purchasing, about 40 miles of pipe, 1,000 customers. There's our connection right there, we're, we're tying into. This is all right now South Mills Water Association, so this is what we're purchasing.
And then, you disconnect, the pipe that goes across the river to South Mills.
That would be cut off, it would be disconnected.
Right.
Okay. Now, we had some questions last time. This is Commerce Park, this is that connection. The, the blue line, this is our water line. This, there's also a purple line that goes back to.
Northside Road.
Northside Road, this is the new highway. This is the pump station, we're projecting where we're, where we're purchasing the property. But, remember, we could have put it here in the Commerce Park, but as you see, if you were pumping water, water would try to come back up, back towards town. Thus far, it was preference to put it on Northside Road, so if we pull water, we can pull it from both sources. So, that's why it was imperative that we try to put one on Northside Road. So that's why it was imperative that we try to put one on Northside Road. And this is where we're at now. This is for the purchasing and getting everything we needed to take over new land area. The permit, right to construct was issued five twenty from the state. Land purchase, we're pending that closure, the closure to close the deal on purchasing. The SCADA, SCADA now is September, July one. The temporary pump, it's ordered delivery July one. Pipe and cycle work, going in, cutting in the valves, check valves and all. Dispatch, they're out for bids now. Power, estimating power, according to their website, it should be completed August fifth. Customer doubt, this is what we got to do in our office. We're projected to send out a form letter with our application, get it back in. So customers change every month, people in and out, so we need touch base with all the customers that we have, given to us and get that in and put that in our database. And then finally, actually the purchase from South Mill's Water Association when that will finally close.
So we'll have to send out an application for continued service, is that what you're...
What, we will send out a application, so we'll have their information on file. I think deposits we talked about, where we're just, they're just going to transfer their deposits to us.
Yeah.
Even though it might not be what we do, but it's grandfathered to a move.
Right.
And then we'll do a form letter, application with a self-addressed envelope back, so we can just drop it all to them this fall, starting July. Just get these letters out.
And when's the deadline for them to get their information back to us? T V D when we actually start operating?
Uh, we talked earlier, at first we want to be July one, that's not going to happen. I think we spoke earlier, October one is our target date. We should make that possible earlier.
I think we have to monitor that just to make sure we, we're, I mean, that's...
Well, we, David originally said September and I said, no, say October. Because we need some cushion. And it's just taken a lot longer to get through the legal process and everything else than we anticipated.
And it's not just one delay, it's, it's different things at contracting, getting the discovery back, so it's a lot.
I appreciate the timeline and kind of going through, hey, we're hitting here, you know, this guy bumped and moved back, because it is a large project and it is kind of good to kind of keep up with exactly where we are. I don't, I don't know about the other commissioners, but you, I hear a lot of questions about, you know, what's, what's happening, what, you know...
That was the question you asked last time, where we were on the timeline.
Absolutely.
I think that's what David tried to...
And I do appreciate that, I do appreciate that.
I know you're trying to rush on Dale, but I thought that timeline was kind of important to put up for the board to see.
So those issues, we got one on the way to permits, the first one done, so that's one that's on.
My next meeting, you'll have the SCADA?
Those SKADs should be done, land purchase will be, yeah, should be two or three.
All right, what else you got? We've got a few more minutes.
That's all I had, any more questions?
And Mr. Chairman, we do plan to have a meeting July twelfth or one July meeting, or each of July's.
So we will have a July twelfth meeting. All right, any other business before we go into closed session? I'll need a motion for attorney-client privilege. Take a motion to go in, close.
Aye.
All right, we'll move to second. All who's in favor say aye. All right, we're in closed session.